All right, now it's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and call if you need to order. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll turn the attendance. Mr. Venter?
Here.
Mrs. Heatherling?
Here.
Mrs. Dahl is not here at the moment, but should be here later. Mrs. Dunaway? Not here this evening. And Mr. Spahn?
Present.
We do still have a forum, sir. Okay, thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and move right in then to to the superintendent and assistant superintendents' reports.
All right, well, we're going to start off with personnel. We have several this evening that are going to be on the agenda later this evening or have recently been on the agenda and was not able to join us last month during our summer session and vacations going on. So I think we'll start off right up here in the front row with Mr. Zink. And I'll let you tell a little bit about yourself. And I see you have some guests this evening as well, but also the position that you'll be living in too.
Okay. I'm Chris Zink. I'm going to be recommended as the principal for the high school this year. I want you to know that I look at this opportunity as both an honor and a privilege. Before I get into that stuff, I have some family with me here today. So ironically, last year, my oldest son was not here. He was at a soccer camp. He's now at a basketball camp. But he does exist. I do have my youngest son, Caden, here. He's going into third grade looking for his buddies. So he's going to be going into the third grade next year at Northmont. But he did participate in our Stage Crafters program here in Tip- and had a wonderful time. And I have my wife here as well. She is the coordinator for gifted services at Northmont City Schools, as well as the curriculum specialist for the high school. Couldn't do it without you guys. As far as our school is concerned, as far as the high school is concerned, we're going to continue to build on the positives that we have moving forward. So rigor, relevance, and relationships are going to be our focus. We're going to continue to do that. But all the while, we want to empower both our staff and our students throughout that process. They all have a voice, and they all have the capacity to lead. So we want to do those things. And our goal and our overall focus is to get everybody ready for college and career and life after high school. Thank you very much. I very much look forward to this opportunity. Go Red Devils.
All right, we'll continue.
Hi, I'm Sylvia Eldridge. This is my son Eli Eldridge, who is an incoming freshman, so he will be his principal. I also have a four-year-old who will be joining the Tip- or the Tip City schools in another year, so the following year. Her and Daddy are at home right now. She isn't feeling well, and I will be taking the position as the middle school technical clerk. So I'm pretty excited to be part of our schools. They've been here since 2011, and we moved here because of the schools, so thank you.
Well, Maggie.
Hello, I'm Carrie Robbins, resident of Tip City. I have three boys, two in high school now, and one going into middle school. I'm really excited for the opportunity to work in the schools. I've had the opportunity to be volunteer as my kids have grown up, so I feel very at home here. I've spent the last 12 years in childcare. Five of those years were with a child that did have special needs, as well as I volunteer at a place in Dark County where we entertain and socialize with their clients. So I feel like that experience will help me help our students here at Tip. So I'm super thankful for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to meeting our students. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Ashburn. I will be the fourth-grade social studies and science teacher at LT. And I grew up here in Tip City, so I'm super excited to be back. I have been teaching the last two years in Dayton, and I am just, like I said, excited to be back and thankful for the opportunity to be just part of this community again, so thank you.
And we had approved Sarah at a prior meeting, but she was not able to join us that evening, so thank you for coming. Thank you all for being here this evening. I know it's a busy time. We're still in summer, so if you'd like to be excused, you're welcome to at this time. Yeah, you might go do some ice cream or something good to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you out in the schools. Our next slide is just about our calendar for this whole year and some important dates. That will be posted on our website. But basically, we know that we have our new teacher orientations, and that will be on August 13th and 14th. And that we have a kindergarten orientation on the 13th. That's at 7:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. because we have two different settings for that. Those are held at the high school in our Center of Performing Arts. And then on the 15th, we have a parent-fourth-grade meeting as well. That's at 6:00 p.m., and that will run until about 7:00 p.m. On the 19th is open house, and that happens for Nevin Copick Elementary beginning at 4, at Broadway beginning at 5, LT Ball at 5:30, and our first-year parent meeting at 6:30. And then on the 21st is our back-to-school night. This is not an open-house format, but that is for our middle school, and that begins at 6:00. And then on the 22nd is the back-to-school night, and that is for the high school, and that begins at 5:30. And then there is a parent meeting for our students at the high school, and that is at 7:30, and that is on the 27th of August. So a lot of dates coming up, but please refer to our website for calls. That'll be right there in handy for you to access. Any questions on that? All right, and then just the opening day for our staff is on Thursday, August the 15th. We certainly want to invite our board members, if you'd like to attend that morning. We will start at 8:00, and that will be at the high school. So we look forward to that. That's always an exciting day, and it's our big kickoff for the year. It's that beginning, and before we know it, we're back to May again. So it happens pretty quickly. Just once again, to underscore the opening day for our students, for first graders through 12th graders, that's going to be on August the 20th. And then for kindergarten, we have a delayed start for them, and that is on August the 23rd. And that rolls us right into our Dayton STEM workshop program. And I'm going to have Mr. Veerhoff, who I've asked and invited to set up the table. He is our approved assistant superintendent starting August 1st. And so we kind of have a duo here with Mr. G. and Mr. Veerhoff this evening. But I'm going to have Mr. Veerhoff highlight about the Dayton STEM workforce program.
So towards the end of June, we were approached by the Dayton STEM Workforce Program through our relationship with Premier Health to discuss a potential partnership with their program. Basically, the Dayton STEM Workforce Program works with schools and businesses to provide scholarships, internship opportunities, and eventually job opportunities. Their motto is basically, they want to retain talent in the Miami Valley area. So what they would do is work with our students through a series of focus groups based on their career interests, and then match them up with different career opportunities in the Dayton area. And ultimately, what this could lead to for our students, at least one of our students would receive a scholarship through this program. And potentially internship opportunities for several of our students with different groups within the Miami- or different companies in Miami Valley area, whether that be Reynolds &amp; Reynolds, Motoman, several groups within- or several companies in this area. So it's a valuable relationship. We've- I've met with the- our contact person a couple of times here throughout the summer. We've even explored the possibilities of doing mock interviews with businesses and either taking our students to a location to do that with business leaders in the area or bringing those business leaders to our building to do that. Bringing business leaders in to do career panels and speaking to our students during advisory at the high school. So there's a tremendous opportunity for our students and growth for us in the area of career exploration.
Excellent.
It was a great day, and I was trying to think how many districts were represented on that day when we went.
That was a seminar that we went to. It was kind of a separate thing, but we've taken some of those ideas and worked with the Dayton Workforce Program on that. We were- we are one of eight schools in the Miami Valley that would be participating in this with the STEM Workforce Program.
Any questions on that? That's something that we're hoping to implement this school year.
Correct.
So is that introduced to the students and their parents then? As the year kicks off, how do they find out about these opportunities with it?
Absolutely. Yep, and we'll be looking at doing some career surveys through NAMions, which is a program that we asked the board for their support on last year. And we're rolling out some career interest surveys and things like that so that we'll be able to identify students who might be interested in biotech and then match them up with the premier focus group or healthcare focus group. Students who are interested in IT and developing a focus group with that. So it'll start relatively small, but we hope to grow from there.
I think we'll move on now to facilities. And Mr. Richly, if you'll pull the slides up, I want to kind of talk through those, and I'm hoping we'll have a good discussion. We've got some important information to go over this evening. Yay! I know. Yes, they're in Mexico and all kinds of exciting places. And here we are.
Greta, do you want to set this up, or do you want me to get right into it?
I thought I would kind of start, and you'd kind of move through it, and then you add as. And Mr. Stevens is going to add too, I think, as we go along. But I'm hoping not to be standing in front of someone. I know you may be eating this a little bit, but I'll pull this over in just a moment. So we're looking this evening particularly at three different options for our configuration for our schools as we move forward. I know that we're really at kind of a crossroads of a decision-making process about essentially the ballot for November. So this, I think, is a great layout to do a little comparison, but we have a number of slides then to support and look at each one of these a little bit closer. The first one we're referring to is option A, which is LT Ball. And it is the- I don't know if you can see this or not, Nancy. It is the pre-K 5. And basically, this is much the same thing that we were talking about as we were with our community in May. It's the addition and renovation of LT Ball. Our new classrooms, new classrooms for actually K through 5. The pre-K would be housed inside LT Ball, the renovation area. It would remain there on the Hyatt side. We would be demolishing and invading Broadway, Tip Central, Nevin Copick. And then we would have a bus garage and tennis courts that would be located over to the high school. So those would be demolished as well and moved. And that now, at this particular cost, when we look at increase particularly in construction, is where we're seeing most of that. Because we are fortunate right now, there is a good rate for our investments that basically is $44 million. And that is an increase from where we were last May. We also have the storm sheltering component that is added in this, and we'll look at that a little bit more closely a little bit later. Option B, the layout for that, once again, that's on the Hyatt side, but that's LT Ball. The fact that would be an addition and renovation for LT Ball. It would be new classrooms, but the new classrooms would be for K through 3. And we'll have kind of a little bit of projection of what that schematically looks like. It would be there on the Hyatt side. And then there would be the demolition and abatement of Broadway, Central, and Nevin. And once again, we would need to move our bus garage and tennis courts over to the high school site. And that is, once again, because we would need space for the parking and our buses with that configuration. That projection with our construction cost is $37.4 million. And the projections we have, all of these are on a 30-year stance, and just also looking once again at the millage, trying to compare those as well. And then option C is on the Broadway side. This is a little bit of a revisit of where we were a couple of years ago when we were on the ballot. And it would be looking once again at a new pre-K 3 structure on that side. There would be temporary swing space that we would have to arrange, as we had discussed before. And that would be over at the LT Ball sites, and that would be grades 2 and 3. Broadway would be demolished in the end and aiming to prepare the site for construction. And then we would also demolish Tip Central there, and we would renovate and have dollars for renovation with LT Ball. And that would be for the classrooms. And we know that a number of those classrooms are walk-through classrooms, and those kinds of things would be addressed in that particular configuration. And that runs at $39.9 million. Once again, that would be 30 years. So we'll kind of- and right now, these are assessed at 30 years and 4.05 interest. And that's on $100,000 home value. So this here is basically the site as it exists right now. And so that just kind of gives us a view of where we're starting. Once again, you can very well see the tennis courts, the bus garage, and Nevin Copick. And those are three pivotal pieces, depending on the configuration of what will or will not be happening with those, the need for moving them as part of the process right away, or possibly not. And then this here is looking at the existing floor plan right now that is in LT Ball. Then we look at- this is what we- you've seen a great deal in our presentations. Mr. Fister's done a great job. He's away this evening, but he's ultimately going to be very involved once again. But as we look at this, that is what we call kind of the three-pedal configuration with the two-story buildings. The K1 and 2 on the lower case, 3, 4, and 5 on the upper level in that two-story building. We had an inset of a stage here, and we did have an addition of a second gymnasium in that. And then this looks a little bit more closely at this. And you can see this is where our second gymnasium, there's one that already exists. We were adding a stage here on the opposite end of our gymnasium for performances there in this particular configuration. And then once again, this gymnasium went for easy access for our younger grade levels in particular. There was an expansion of the kitchen area that was needed for the size of this campus. And then this just focuses in on- we had nine sections in each of these classroom configurations, looking toward the future and having that so that we would definitely have the capacity. Now, this is option B, and this will be a little bit different look than what you've really seen. This here is looking at a proposal that came up in discussion and as well worth looking at of having new classroom space for K through 3 only. And that we would have the renovation with the- of classrooms in the LT Ball area. We still would have the inset of the stage. And one of the things that we would have to look at would be potential gymnasium. There may need to be an addition of the gymnasium on this as well. But this actually is for the classroom spaces, what we're showing with this right now. This is a piece that we've had quite a bit of conversation about because on the Hyatt side, there is that question about, just really from traffic study, about what is the traffic flow and the congestion. And so this is a piece that, once again, had been brainstormed, and we're trying to move that to the second stage to really see what could that physically look like. And so we know that we have the creek that is a bit of an obstacle, but we've also been able to get some projections about this. And so essentially, we go just a little bit more, what I call upstream, a little bit farther up on the street and be able to come out. And then it's not really what you would call an exit ramp, but it is a yielding area that allows you to have our flow of traffic to come and get off the highway a little bit sooner to avoid some of the backflow for that. And that, I think, will have an impact, projected that it will. And that right now is another piece that's under consideration, particularly depending on what we put on that side there at Hyatt. This is just looking once again at the Broadway side. Because we had done an extensive amount of work when we were on the ballot prior, when we were looking at our pre-K 3, we have a number of things that we'll be able to draw from again if we happen to go that direction. But that just shows right where Broadway sits in the community. And this, once again, looks a little bit more, I guess, historically. It looks at the site, being the 6.04 acres, the configuration. And even though that's playground space, that's where the castle that is so familiar and popular in our district, just the history of that, of where that was located once on that side. One of the things about that is this site has historically been a school site.
Greta, if it's okay.
Sure, you can inject it.
I included some slides. So five- it was five years ago, we looked at this plan. And what I did is I went to a previous presentation, and I just grabbed a bunch of slides, and I brought them over. And I don't want this to be construed like I'm selling this plan, but this is information that I think three of you on the board now were not at the board at this time. I think Andy was the only one who was kind of seeing this developed, so I thought it'd be worth.
Sam.
Oh, were you on the board when?
When we put it on the ballot, I mean, you guys have basically done most of the planning at the time, but we came on in time to- I mean, it was in May.
Okay. But at least for a couple of you, I thought it'd be good information for you to see. So this is okay. If you had a blank slate at Broadway, what would you do? There was a lot of engagement with the advisory committee, and these were some of the goals. That it would be an important, prominent, visible, welcoming neighborhood landmark. It would continue to encourage the school, the kids walking to school. We would think about safe separation of cars and buses and staff parking. The community valued the access to the playgrounds. We want to make sure that remained viable and being a good neighbor. We looked at the building orientation. On an ideal site, you want a long east-west axis, which we have by the relationship. We looked at other site drivers like noise. There is railroad, an active railroad track that goes right by, so we want to take that into consideration. We looked at where the walkers were coming from. I remember Galen, you had input on this. We're predominantly coming up 7th, 6th, and 5th. Some are coming down 6th and 5th and a few east on 7th. But the bigger arrows represented where the majority of the walkers were coming from. So an entry kind of biased on the south side, funneling the majority of the walkers made sense. We thought about the investment the city's made in ker cuts, utilizing those for parent drop-off and pickup and visitor parking. These are all assets to the site. You don't have to build roads and develop internally. You can use the public streets to manage this. So we set up our long axis for a pre-K to 3. On the east-west orientation, we put the entrance on the south side, the sunny side, right off of 6th Street. We're envisioning pre-K and K and 1 on the first floor, and then second and third grade on the second floor. Shared Services Building in the back would be a gym, stage, and your cafeteria and delivery off of Dow. Taking consideration noise from the trains, we were going to put the staff parking lot, 75 spaces, on the northeast corner. And then buses would come east on Dow, south on 7th, and they would hook in. They would be pointing front nose in with the door on the right so the kids can pop out either directly in the academic or stage them in the auditorium. The buses would then pull up east on Dow now. The bus loading and loading would double as a playground, so we would have a gate on Dow and a gate on 7th that would close after the buses arrive. And this bus loading area would double as your hard service play area of Scotch and Foursquare and basketball backstops for the kids. We would have some bike parking off of Broadway, and then even some thoughts about the future on the east, how this could be expanded down the road. So that was the look. That was the concept diagram verbatim from five years ago that would hold for this discussion. A second piece of that was the swing space issue. This is a photo on the bottom. We did a Wyoming middle school. We did a temporary school for 600 students, and this is what it looked like. And the build- they're actually modular buildings. See the image on the- the image on the front? It's actually a hallway with classrooms on either side, they're air-conditioned. So this is what we were considering also, was three modular buildings on the east side of LT. So our proposal for this was, on the east side of LT, there's green space and parking. And then we would park three eight-classroom modular buildings on the east side of LT. This would handle our academic spaces, and students would go back into the building for things like access to gymnasiums, et cetera. We did a full modular building design package back then. And so this is the detail of them, each with eight classrooms and restrooms in each one of them. So all of your second grade could be in the building. All of your third grade could be in the building. And the middle building was for administration, special ed, and some of the extra support spaces for that. So that's a real quick summary of option C, which kind of takes us back to kind of this lead slide of what the three options are.
Yes. And I know that Mr. Stevens, do you want to kind of inject now? He has a special handout this evening that looks at grades, millage, and.
So in our May- yeah, in our May plan, we had the idea of bond wrapping because we still have high school debt outstanding for the next five years. And that situation's not gone away. And so I presented these three dollar amounts to Baird, and they were able to present to us potential millages that would be needed to do the bond wrapping idea again. We're still looking at five years left for payments on the high school. And so Mike and Mark with Baird ran 27-year options, 30-year options, and 37-year options. At the top of the sheet that I gave you, it has what happened in May of 2019, and you can compare with where we are now with the millage rates. What we do have going for us is interest rates have done something we didn't think was going to happen back earlier this year, and that they've gone down rather than going up. Construction costs did continue to go up, however, plus additional costs for storm shelter allowances and things like that. So we've actually kind of got a good and bad situation here where the interest rates have helped to offset those increases in costs. And so we're seeing millage rates that, depending on the years we use, they equal to or are less than what we saw in May.
So the demolition for Nevin Copick on option C would be handled outside of that bond issue?
So it's a great question. On option C, when we look at the Broadway, be back on the Broadway side, one of the considerations is that the aspect of, once again, the configuration of our parking space and all that will be quite different because the need will not be there as when if we were constructing on the Hyatt side. So we might actually be able to consider keeping Nevin Copick and seeing if that might have possibilities for our TSEP, or, you know, group that is presently at Broadway, might be able to be used by Community Services. I mean, that's something that we could explore. And it'd be something that even possibly there could be- I know we have some costuming that is at Broadway, that there might be work between that and the high school to do some reorganization and have a space that would be provided for that. It's just a thought, but it's why right now we do not have the demolition of Nevin Copick on this budget of the plan.
Isn't Nevin part of the problem with why we even want to go this route is because the upkeep of these buildings and the asbestos? I mean, is keeping Nevin something that we- is it worth it enough to keep it with all the costs to maintain it?
So that's a good question. Actually, Mr. Fister probably the best to answer that. But one of the things we know is that it's not air-conditioned, and it doesn't really have the, what I call, the electrical infrastructure to be able to sustain and do something like that. If another group is wanting to have a designated space or two that they air-condition, and that's not to say that we don't have any, I think we have the office area at Nevin's air-conditioned, and our library. But ultimately, that, say, for example, if Community Services or somewhere want to utilize that space or TSEP, then that they would have to, in a sense, a bit take it as-is because we really wouldn't invest in additional enhancements to that. I do know even at Broadway, in the space that they have utilized, they have done some enhancements for their own space. And I know some were by donations, but some was by their own choice. We've not had these conversations because it's so early and premature in the stage. Uh, we've not had these conversations because it's so early and premature in this stage. Uh, we do know that the heating right now, uh, in time, we would have to find out because actually the heating, the, what I call the boiler, is housed in a portion of the transportation building.
And that, uh...
Uh-huh, so that would be a piece that would have to be worked through. Now...
Greg, I, I believe that Gary said that the boiler is in its own section of the bus garage.
Okay.
So we could take down the bus garage and still have the boiler area.
And that boiler piece for that.
And then the, the draw on the electrical grid would be much smaller for TSEP classrooms, however many they have. If you put air conditioning window units in, then trying to wire the entire school and every classroom with a, with a window air conditioner. So, um, the, the electrical grid could handle some wall units, but not the entire building being retrofitted with that, so.
And the one thing about Nevin, it does not have a basement area, that's one of the other problems that we have with Broadway. We have to watch with water damage and things of that nature.
Another thing the board could consider, it is a building plan that lends itself to a partial detonation.
Okay.
Given that's all in one floor, that could be another consideration is if there was a study and the community partners did need a hundred percent of it, um, you could consider funding that, maybe take off what's on the i, and so really it's up to front, just another idea.
Yeah.
I mean, it's probably not a long-term solution, but it is a solution for, um, TSEP to keep them, uh, from the district and give them some space and Community Services some space, um, and allow them to plan further, um, to use some in the future. I mean, that was obviously one of the things we heard from the community was a concern about losing TSEP in the, in the, in the district. And this possibly gives them an option to be able to have some space here in the district.
The one tricky piece we just have to be aware of is that during the construction, uh, Nevin will be in, will keep our students at Nevin during that time.
Right.
Yeah.
So they'll lose space for that, for that whatever construction period of time is that we tear down and build.
And so in option C, there would be the need to take down the bus garage and move the tennis courts, relocate them?
It would not be a need, you have the...
Not a need initially.
Initially.
I mean, as far as when we really look at a full master plan, uh, when we look at the age of that, at some time, we probably should make a decision about that.
Mostly, mostly the bus garage, right?
Yes.
But the theory is you're not adding load to the Hyatt site with this plan.
Sure.
So the need to, to add parking on the south and a bus stop on the south goes away.
Yeah, and ultimately then when we think about dispersing a little bit of the traffic congestion, uh, the Hyatt, the Broadway side helps us with that. The other side about that, that we have that site with the turnoff of, of trying to look at that. While we would be under construction, we will have the second and third over there on, on that site. So I, I do think consideration of that turnoff would be of help. And truly when we have more activities over on the field and the baseball and, and different times, I think it would be a benefit as well for our district to have the turnoff.
On option C there, um, can you describe a little more detailed renovations that would be to LT ball?
Yeah, I'd be essentially...
Yeah, because you actually have...
I can take a stab at that, so there are eight classrooms on the north, uh, and eight classrooms on the south. And so the thought would, and these currently serve with fifth grades, the thought would be that fourth and fifth pretty much stays where they are. But perhaps, and I'm just throwing out ideas, perhaps this corridor goes away as a egress corridor and that, um, we, we develop stub corridors into the classrooms to get back to the far classrooms, which means the spacing on these, these front is going to have to change. We'd probably want to add some next to your windows in. Basically, we, we would clean up fourth grade and fifth grade classrooms at their current location through renovation.
Basically, we put, I mean, we got temporary walls in there, we put permanent walls in there. We probably change, like you said, the, the hallways and we may run the hallways...
Yeah, going this way.
Going that way, so that we can, um, access all the rooms, um, so that, uh, that, that makes more sense. I just, I mean, it's not a huge reconfiguration, but a little bit of a reconfiguration of those classrooms to join.
Sure.
And other classrooms that are interior, we can also do skylights, uh, Mr. Pfister's talking, trying to do skylights. So we can have some natural lighting in those rooms.
So I thought we were looking to sort of project, um, growth in that we're looking for nine classrooms. And I know that that's a, um, consideration for elementary, then so all those kids go from third grade to fourth and fifth. So would we add a ninth classroom for fourth and fifth in this?
I, I think conceptually what we look at is trying to repurpose found space within the building. There's some underutilized space in this building. Back here, uh, multipurpose room, I mean, that locker, there's some underutilized space that potentially could be additional academic space within the current footprint.
And it would take some renovation work, but yeah, we've looked at that. I think the other, another one is, uh, I think it's this multipurpose room which is, had been a band room at one time. That space is large, once again, no windows, uh, but if you were doing some renovation, then you could do some enhancements with that.
Would this accommodate, you know, long-term, this projected increase in, you know, in enrollment? Is option C here big enough to handle that? I mean, is that part of the, and that may be the same question you all have had, but...
So, so the Broadway side, I mean, we, are we got nine sections?
Yes.
There's nine sections for that, so that...
So the only place you're really not is going to be LT ball, we've got to work through that and making sure we get nine sections set up in there.
Right, yeah.
For both the pre-K three-three and then the high school, we've probably got enough to do the nine sections in.
And we're going to have a ninth section, fourth grade this upcoming year, so, I mean, I know Mr. Pfister and my maintenance crew are working on one of those rooms right now, converting it over to another classroom.
If I remember right, in, in, when the Broadway plan was up the last time, I think it was about twenty-nine, thirty million. So, I mean, now it's, you know, thirty-nine, is that mostly due to the LT ball renovations or just increases in material? I mean, what accounts for about third...
I think there's two million set aside for renovations at LT ball in this particular plan, the, the Broadway, the, the pre-K three. Uh, so that does provide the enhancement in that those classroom configurations that we were talking about.
Right.
Uh, but yes, construction and the, uh, shelter enhancement.
Those three, those three.
Yes, I, I think Gary took the old numbers from two thousand sixteen and used the updated, uh, construction costs. And ended up coming in, is what it is.
That much more, so, okay.
Construction costs, even look at, I mean, for example, look at option A, we're at forty-four million. And we put it on the ballot for thirty-five, seven, so, I mean, you're, we had an eight million dollar increase in six months. And the cost basically is based on the project, so, you, you know, you're looking at maybe what, nine or ten million over a five-year period. We're, we're probably...
Is this what, did I hear you, where the storm shelter would go on this site?
Yes. So if, if, uh, if the board moves forward with option C and if the state legislature does not continue the auditorium on twenty-eight of the storm shelters, we would have to incorporate a storm shelter into this plan. And, you know, one space, you could do it, would be your cafeteria potentially. So you would have, you would have a storm shelter on the site to house all the students and teachers just in this building.
And that is not a two-story section of the, of the school, correct? So that right there is...
Savings.
I think one of the things is, is unfortunate is to see the, the prices, the increase, uh, is that, uh, with the wraparound and the, that handout paper, uh, it is, uh, pretty amazing to see that we are able to hold the millage at, at, as, even though it's an increase, it's not spiked as much as what we're seeing, you know, for example, uh, with the construction cost as a whole. So the interest rates right now are working in our favor, which is absolutely a, a, a very great benefit for us, it's a blessing. Because if we had over those, it would just be almost insurmountable. But, uh, that is helpful when you see, and we're still right now, for November, we would still be able to qualify for the wraparound. And that's, that's a great benefit to us as we know.
Sure.
So that first five years, and what's interesting, uh, and I'll just kind of share it because it was a question I asked and, and it made me feel good when, when Dave, our treasurer, said, you know, I had a question and then I was kind of mid-stream and then it dawned on me. But I was thinking, I said, you know, it says for the first five years, we have the wrapped millage. And I said, do we need to reduce that to four now? Because we were in May and now we're in November, but because, and, and Sam knows right away, but I, you have to slow down and think about, because even if that had passed, we do not begin the collection until January. So that gives us until November and we still would have the five years for that wraparound, which is nice, very nice. But just a reminder that that does drop off as of December thirty-first and because of the wraparound.
Well, the, the wraparound could still occur, we'd just do four years. It's, it's the, it's the, uh...
Special needs.
The special needs that drops off, right?
Thank you.
Starts putting the projects out of reach.
I have a question about option B.
Okay. So, B, I think is the one that says add-on.
Oh, you want to see that?
Yeah, it's a site plan. Yeah, I was going to...
Sure.
Because with the one that was on the ballot last May, it was obviously similar, but...
Right.
Fourth and fifth were going to be in the new, and then...
Right, so this juts out when you see, is, and we can show that back, but it juts out just a little bit differently. It's more of like a pedal piece. And this one here is flatter and a little more compact, but it's because it's housing, you know, far less students, yes.
But, but the plan too was that LT ball is going to have this shared space and, you know, lots of...
Yes.
That goes away with this though, right? I mean, this were kind of...
Well, so...
We lost a gymnasium.
No gym and, yeah.
And then, I mean, the, the other thing...
We have a gym.
Well, we lost the additional gym.
Additional gym.
Yeah, it's in the square footage, we have the square footage for an additional gym.
Yeah, so right now on this, I think...
In the diagram, it could be, you know, if we want to move it out of here, the diagram could change and the gym could push.
Oh, okay.
Or you could add something on here, I suppose.
So this adds a gym.
There's still two gyms.
Okay, I didn't realize there was going to be two gyms.
Yeah, we, we need that.
Right.
Well, we're really not changing the cafeteria space and kitchen, some of that stuff is staying fairly the same.
But with the renovation, we would have to enhance it.
The kitchen would have to get expanded, okay.
So what is the difference between A and B? I'm having a hard time understanding the difference.
We took twenty thousand square feet out of the scope by...
Eliminating...
So in, in the, in the previous plan, if you, if you look at, uh, this plan here, you could say...
That's plan A.
Yeah, you could say, you know, it's pretty nice to have two music rooms and two art rooms and a computer lab and, um... So it, there would be some condensing that would happen. To, to get twenty thousand feet out of the plan, we are, um, condensing more program within that existing space.
How would you get all the students through art and music if you only have one space for now twelve hundred students?
Where, you know, locker rooms go away, the staff dining, professional development room goes away, I mean, we'd have to take a look at...
So there are ways to, to...
Well, if we get two classrooms of art and two classrooms of music.
There's space for them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it, it will look different.
Yeah, the idea in this one, uh, A renovates the kitchen, moves it to the offices, the offices go over and expand. Uh, if we, with, with option B, the offices stay where they are. So we'd have to start renovating all those other spaces that were utilized. And the, the kitchen, uh, there could be a, a, an addition that goes south of the building and juts out. And it would kind of wrap around and you'd have to imagine there's a, an air conditioning or some kind of unit that's now sitting outside of that building. So it would have an L shape around that, um, to make the kitchen enlarge to the south. It could be done, I mean, if you think about it, OFCC was saying that we could lose a hundred and ten thousand square feet of square footage and still be able to teach our K through twelve, so...
I think part of the thing, um, that makes this hard for me is that we don't know why our community didn't pass the first one. So that would get us more direction on where we need to, the direction we need to head to get in line with what our community wants. You know, if they want a building at Broadway, that would be clear to us which option that they're telling us we want. It's hard to make a choice when we don't know. We know they said no to this plan, why they said no, we don't really have a clear, um, vision of why they said no, what they didn't like.
Yeah, I think we just have ideas, people say, what are you doing with Broadway site? What are you going to do with TSEP? What are you going to do with the traffic? I think these were all those questions that came up.
Right.
Was it what killed it? I don't know.
Yeah, we don't.
Um, I, I will say the, the benefits of the Broadway site going back to that and doing a pre-K three there is we still utilize Broadway, so we know what's going on there. The traffic pattern at the Hyatt site will go down because you don't have the Nevin building there anymore. Um, TSEP could utilize the Nevin building, so we kind of answer some of those, but again, like you were saying, we don't know exactly why.
We don't know if the no is because of the configuration, we know it could have been about the OFCC, it could have been about, it could be a number of factors. But I agree with you in that we need to investigate that and we don't have time to investigate that if we're going to move forward for the November ballot. And so I feel a lot of pressure, especially having this new information. Um, and I appreciate the configuration, I love the ideas of having these as options, um, but I don't want to make a decision in, in eight days.
It's, I mean, it is, it's a big decision and I know we want it to be the right decision because we need these buildings for our students. Uh, I think, you know, we have to be thinking about what was, was going well and what remain questions. I think part of it, from the one that didn't go successful for Broadway earlier, was the whole question about the master plan and what was happening with our middle school students and our other grades, was that was a, a pre-K three and what's happening with four, five and six through eight. I do think that we do have a direction for that now and I think that that part is, is relieved. But I agree with you, we don't, you know, it was two hundred votes, what, what was, and, and of course, we would like to pass stronger than just right at the mark, but what questions did they have in their mind and what part did we still need to work out? But they would have confidence in voting yes, we don't know that, and that's right. And, and unfortunately, there was some confusion right close to the ballot time, which makes it difficult for us as well, so...
Yeah, there's no doubt, I mean, to me, the, it really wouldn't even be a question, I mean, if, if it weren't for the debt limit and the condition of the schools, I mean, because as we've said before, if it's not November, it could be four or five years, you know, before it's even a possibility.
Right.
True.
If it could go up in a year or two, I wouldn't really even consider November.
Right.
Because just for all the reasons you said, it's just not, you know, ideal, but...
And I think they're potentially saying that it could be seven years before students would be able to move in. So I think there's two ways to look at that. One is when we'd be able, I, I think it's five years projected, when we would be able to be on the ballot again. And then the other part would be, then you, if you were successful, then it'd be probably almost an additional two years before the students would move in. And that's a difficult thing to think about, our students being in the level of, of buildings we have at those younger elementaries for seven years, that's, that's a long time yet, yeah.
That's what makes this a hard decision, is because there is a sense of urgency because of the opportunities, you know, well, the cost that will increase after with, with this, there's, there's a lot of things that are lost without that limit and...
Yeah.
And those opportunities and how much longer can we keep on using these elementary schools? Well, I guess, I'd like to hear from your group, which one are you recommending? I mean, these are great options and I appreciate you putting it together, but what is it that you think that, that, you know, your administration can get behind and endorse?
Well, you know, there's many ways to look at it. Uh, certainly, we had a lot of confidence in this K through five and actually it's pre-K five, pre-K five configuration. I mean, we fully believed in it and everything we were sharing, we were spot on as far as what we thought the benefits were and what, how it would serve our community. And I still believe that, the difficulty is the forty-four million. That's just very, very difficult. So for that reason, that becomes difficult for me to say, let's move forward on that, even though I believe in that and I feel like our community feels informed about it. So that, that's a piece that I... So that, that's a piece that I, I think is difficult, the forty-four million. And unfortunately, there's not an easy way to get around that. It's just the increase of cost, it's the, uh, need for the, the, um, storm sheltering and it's a larger site of, of students, so we have a larger area that we have to, to provide that. Between these two, uh, you know, once again, every million makes a difference, but there's not a great deal of difference, not like when you're getting up to forty-four. I think that this is viable, I know that that's a little bit more, I think that one is worth strong consideration because of all the prior work that was done that's available to be used once again and that it does allow that site to maintain as a school site, which is something that community does believe in. Uh, and, um, the aspect of when we, we think about just our traffic, that remains to be a big question about the Hyatt site. And that's not to say that that area that we saw that was that exit, I still think that that meant something viable just for all the, the different things that do happen at the, I guess we call that the Hyatt site. But the, the other aspect of it is we know that there would be the swing space. Now, the one thing that's difficult for me is, is fif, it's one million five hundred thousand for swing space.
A million.
Oh, just one.
One point five is the storm shelter.
Oh, storm shelter is one point five and it's one million for the swing space, so swing space has always been a difficult for, one for me because basically, it's temporary.
Yeah.
However, it does have air conditioning.
But it doesn't have a gym or a cafeteria and all those other spaces that a school needs.
Right, no, it doesn't. And that will be, uh, I'll call it, um, a space crunch as far as, and, and a, a very big logistic configuration with our administrative team about how that space will be shared for those two years, so there'll need to be a lot of people believing in it and give and take because it will be a little less than ideal because we won't, we're, we're not going to do a swing space gymnasium.
So sort of to continue that conversation, we don't have any timelines on any of these projects. What are we looking at to, uh, as far as a move-in date provided we, we pass it in November? Do, do we have some ideas of what, what we would be looking at as far as move-in date?
Yeah, so, so if you passed in November of twenty nineteen, uh, you would say bid in November of twenty, and then a, um, an eighteen month, eighteen month build cycle puts you in November of twenty-one, summer of twenty-one, twenty-two, school year, so it's two and a half years. And that would be, that would be making sure things go well, you know what I mean? No major hiccups, but it's dual.
That's all of those, please.
All of them.
All three of them, I mean, even though we did a, maybe a little more work on option C.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a hundred thousand feet and you've got a, a bait and to abolish your building first. So there's some steps there, Broadway.
So which one was your recommendation?
What, what was your team saying when you all came up with this?
C is what the team is saying.
And, and I'll go back, I can tell you, it, it answered questions that we were still asking at our previous board meeting, what about the traffic? What about Broadway? What about T sub? Community services with the gym? What, I mean, what are we going to do? And it's just kind of, if you keep Nevin as a partial community services building slash T sub, it kind of helps, will fit everything that we need. Still have Broadway as a school site with a nice building, air conditioning in it. Uh, you update LT on the inside for the classrooms, so now you've taken care of the pre-K through five. You've already taken care of our six, seven and eight, which was one of the questions that we had in, in two thousand and sixteen election was, what are you doing for the middle school? Kind of had to look at, we were not sure. We've addressed that grade now and now we moved to more, we, we're kind of dealing with just our elementary kids now. It did utilize the work that Rich, that Rich the Architects had done back in twenty sixteen for, for the design. I mean, Mike still has all of that in his computer. Um, I mean, we still have to tweak the design a little bit, but, um, I mean, there was just a lot of good things that came back with looking at the Broadway site. So.
She said August twenty-two, twenty-three is what you're, you're projecting as far as.
Uh, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Is that, is that right?
It seems, it seems kind of quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes a difference because it's kind of the same thing.
So the fall of twenty-two, right?
Yeah, the fall of twenty-two, that's twenty-two, twenty-third.
The fall of twenty-two. It's twenty-two, twenty-three, August twenty-two, twenty-three would be the time that we'd move in.
That's, yeah, yeah, three years from today.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Three years from today.
Uh, I, I will just throw out one more point on the swing space, so Mark and I did swing space for six hundred students for Wyoming Middle School. It was a five-eight building, parked them on the baseball field, um, right next to Wyoming High School, which was a nine-twelve. So we parked five-eight in a baseball field right next to their high school. And I don't want to say it was seamless, I bet it was, it worked well. So the thought of parking two and three next to a four or five and oh, by the way, we've got a six-eight right next, it just to us seems, I don't want to, um, negate the issues that people are going to have or the concern people have, but from our perspective, it is dual. And in fact, you're right next to the building, approximated, very good.
Yeah, we did. So, um, I, I like option A because it, it wa, I thought it was a, a sound plan and we have a short turnaround time if we, if we move this into November. And I think that the campaigning, uh, and education worked well in our community and so that will be fresh in people's minds. So we sort of like that as something we should continue. And I believe, even though it costs more, I think we should stay with that plan because I think plan B sort of sends the message is that we're scrimming on, and our, our kids and our teachers deserve a nice school and we need to be planning and projecting for increases in our community. We know that's happening. So I would seek, rather see us invest in plan A and continue that, um, rather than plan B. Now, I do like the advantages of plan C because it does answer some of those questions. If we reject plan C, we still need to answer those questions, we could go with plan A, you know?
I agree. Uh, but what you're, you're indicating on the plan A, once again, when I was talking about financing and the benefit that we have right now, we were asking on the ballot five point four mils at thirty years. And fortunately, even with that increase up to forty-four million, it's five point seven nine mils.
Right.
So that, that's, that's pretty amazing for the jump that it is, that, once again, it's, it's not an astronomical jump in millage, which is, which has been the show to our community for sure.
Correct. Right, and we're moving from twenty-seven to thirty years, it makes it, you know, I think that's a slight bump. Even though when you add it up to the forty-four million and you compare it to thirty-seven point four, I mean, I just, I don't like the idea that we're scrimping on, if we're going to invest in this building, I want it to be a nice building, that's going to last for several generations. And I think that we would fit, I don't want to see us scrum on the spaces for all the functions that happen in a school. And so when you add it up to the four, forty-four million, it does look steep compared to where we were in May. However, when you break down all the, the numbers and move it from twenty-seven to thirty years, it seems reasonable.
And I have to say, five point seven nine, and that's because when this slide was made, it was five point eight. And just the difference in today's configuration that we received, uh, was that it's gone down slightly enough that it makes it five point seven nine. So, uh, and we'll take every little bit we can get, that's for sure.
I know this isn't popular except for, except for with me, but if you go to thirty-seven years, I mean, it's even, just to throw that out there, it's, wow, I mean, five point oh seven.
Yeah, and I think that if we did that, we definitely have to do some education about that.
Yeah.
Uh, that was a piece that we heard that, that our community did not want to pass on a debt to the next generation.
Right, right. Sure.
Uh, since then, there's been a little conversation about that, all generations should be supporting education. So it's not as if they are, are holding a burden, it's, it's, it's just part of their, their shared to support education, but I, that's, that's a community thought and decision for sure, yeah.
Well, I'll say again, I mean, to me, it's, it comes down to household budgets. I know it stretches it out, but it lowers the burden on the household budget. Not everybody's going to actually pay that for thirty-seven years, I mean, these people coming in and out of the community, you know, how many people actually would shoulder that money? It's not something, you know, you do in your personal finances, that may not be wise, but and, and to some extent, the district, if you look at it as a person or as, you know, some, yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that would make some sense, but that's not really what's going on here, really, it's every individual household paying a little chunk of it. And to me, if you could lower that as much as you can, that helps people out, so, but it's just my thoughts.
Well, and I think we've had a good track record of refinancing when we can.
Yes.
So we could shorten that down, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to turn out to be thirty-seven years, it might be thirty-four years or, I mean, the high school is a good indication of that, but.
Well, I could support an option C, I just think we have to, in this plan, have an answer for Nevin. Definitely say if we're going to keep it for T sub or swing spaces, we're going to have to make that choice.
Yes.
Say we're going to, you know, cut off that wing to allow the footprint to closer fit than the need of what's going on in there. Um, I don't think we can go to the ballot and say we could keep it, I think we have to have answers of what we're actually intending to do because, and, you know, we don't really have any information of why people voted no, but I get the feeling that, um, our inability to answer some questions is costing us votes. And so I think we'd have to have answers if we decide to go option C with what we are going to, and at the end of the day, what is going to happen in Nevin. Not just possibilities of what could happen, run to make some choices and then, um, educate.
And so let's play out that scenario. Would we maintain ownership of that building? Would we rent that building to them? We would be maintaining that, the cost to.
I would, I would think we'd be renting it, yes.
So we would be the landlord that maintains the cost
Yeah.
to keep it going, so when the toilets don't work or.
And, and I think that's kind of what we've got going on right now, et cetera.
You're right.
Yeah.
Well, I guess.
We just wouldn't have to have our office staff in there and, and the principal and, and just be.
Well, I guess I'm curious as to, in the future, what kind of investment in maintaining a building that we're saying that we don't have funds to maintain anyway? So just maintaining it as a rental space, what kind of money is going to be going into it to keep it functioning?
And I think, I think Mr. Prister was looking into those costs, um, because the board had asked him to capitalize that. I think he said thank you.
Was that before he left to go to Mexico or what?
So when we think about whatever configuration is chosen, that there's two big steps yet. Uh, one would be that basically it would go to the county auditor's office and then he would really, uh, at that time figure out what the, it would be the certification for the first read. So essentially, all three plans could be sent there for that. But then we would have to have at our first read, a decision that absolutely have to be made because the next step is then you have to send it to get for the, the board of election to get your, uh, millage rate. And all of that, once again, is very time sensitive.
Valid language and all that stuff, kind of like.
Yes, yes, yes.
You know, option B, I feel like, I mean, after listening to some of the conversation, I, we still don't have a good, uh, good plan or, or, I don't feel like, I, I understand what all, how is, how it would be laid out or what that building would really look like. Um, so I, I'm struggling with looking at option B right now, even though it's the cheapest plan, it's, uh, I just, I, I'm struggling, it doesn't, doesn't look like it, we have enough information to really say, hey, let's go option B.
I would say the clarity is on option A and C one because A, we had worked very hard on that, diligent on that, had good communication, we had a clear understanding of what that was going to involve. And C, similar, because we had taken it to the ballot before, so we had a very clear indication of, of what that was going to look like. So I would agree, those two, A and C, we, we definitely have, that worked out much clearer.
So, um, yeah, I'm, I, I've sort of discarded option B, at least at this point, unless we get some more information on where we are. I gotta say, option A, I thought we had a fantastic plan when we went to educate the voters and, I mean, I thought it was the right plan for, for the district and, and, uh, it gave us what we needed. The fact that it went up eight million dollars from May to now, uh, I guess I'm really struggling with. I can't, can't justify additional eight million dollars. Um, I mean, even if that's what the cost is, I'm just struggling with it being eight million dollars.
How did it increase that much and just?
Right.
That was just May.
I mean, some of it's a storm shelter, right? I mean, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta tell, tell, tell the facts here, right? So some of that cost is actually the storm shelter cost, and we're saying, so it's not, I'd say it gone up eight million dollars, some of that, we've added some additional, uh, costs ourselves to the, to the project or the state has, so, but it's still, um, a big number in my opinion of where we were. So, you know, I'm leaning towards option C is, is really where, where I, I think that we are. Now, when you look at the numbers, with this little handout that we got, and you, you look at option A, really, when it comes down to it, the taxpayers are at thirty years, costs seem to be fairly minimal, um, increase, I mean, you don't see eight million dollars, I don't think, in the cost when you're talking, you know, two oh two versus one eighty-nine or, or one thirty-eight versus one thirty-five fifty, I mean, there's, it's not, not a big difference, but there is, there is some difference, but when you look at the option C and those costs, we're actually going to reduce how much we're going to collect from the taxpayers, versus what we, we proposed in May to what we would propose now in a thirty-year plan. I gotta say that I'd, I'd be leaning more towards option C. And, and I mean, I, I hear some of the discussion here, do we just wait? I, I, or, you know, because we didn't get all the information maybe we would have liked as a result of the, of the May, uh, May vote. But knowing that we would be looking at seven years or more to get this, our students in a new building, um, that we'd have to make those buildings last seven more years, I think we gotta go forward in November with, with a plan to try and get those, those students a new building and our staff a new building. Um, yeah, at least try here in, in November and see what, see if we can get it done. And we know there's a need out there, I think the community knows there's a need, we spent a lot of time educating the community about the need. And, and I, I don't think anybody's denying the need. Um, so, you know, it's, it's what is the right plan? And I guess in interest of trying to keep costs down, maybe option C is the best plan and keeps, it answers some of the questions that we were getting asked and, and keeps us moving forward and getting that facility that we need.
Well, that also means then, I mean, it sort of rushes, there's no opportunity to get community feedback, I don't think, maybe in two weeks. There have been no formalized meetings with community services, T sub, to even, you know, that, how interested they are.
That's right. And part of it is, is like, what, what's board's level of interest too? Because you hate to wet somebody's appetite if it's not really on, on the, the block to be considered, I think. I mean, certainly that's something that can be scheduled between now and, and provided, you know, in a Friday board update or information only about what's their level of interest. Uh, and it's hard to say, if T sub indicates that they have to move even for two-year swing space time, they may think we've moved and we're going to be settled in our new space, we don't any longer have an interest. That, I mean, we really don't know. And since they may not know initially, I mean, um, so all those things are difficult. It is difficult too with the timing of even their board meetings, if they wanted to have a, a board meeting and really sit at our workstation and talk about it. I'm not for sure what week of the month that they hold those. Yeah, and I go back here on this. And I go back here on this, I think this forty-four million is startling, when you know of the difference. The part that's, that's, that also is just an interesting piece, uh, when it's, it was five, I think that's back on here, when it was a five point four, and it's a five point eight, or as today's figure, five point seven nine, that, you know, we're talking about a four to, an eight, we're talking about four tenths of a millage. Uh, the other thing that we're talking about, the difference between this one and, and the Broadway, is once again, we're talking about a difference between, um, a five point eight, and then the other one is a five point two six, almost five point three. So, you're talking about, once again, you know, a matter of, you know, four tenths millage or so, yeah. Now, once again, our local voters are going to be sho- shouldering that.
Well, we all live here too, so we're all sort of...
That's exactly right, we, we shoulder it too. Yeah. Those are not easy decisions.
Well, I guess I just think in, in, really, we have like, I know I said eight days, we have two weeks, really, to have those meetings, to get some feedback. They're, like you said, their, their boards aren't gonna be able to meet in those times to determine, you know... I guess it's important to have those meetings to ask them, if we proceed with option A, you know, they've had some time to think that that might be where we are going.
Yes.
Are they in a position to say what they would do? That would help us, you know, we're all partnering in this together, and it would really help answer those questions. We can't answer those questions for them. Even in option C, we can't answer those questions for them, and, because they may not even want that. They may not, they may say we don't want that, you know, we can't presume that.
And sometimes budgets don't shoulder it either. Even, you know, like, with, you know, we have a great agreement with community service, but, you know, uh, it would, if it's more rooms that they'd be renting, then it would be more rental costs.
Sure.
You know, uh, it, it's hard to know. Same thing with TSEP, that, uh, they are renting from us, but there would be a new rental agreement if they came and depending. Uh, you don't know, the one that they find in swing space may be a break that they're more comfortable with.
And I think we're gonna really have to answer why we were going to demolish it in our first plan, and why we're not gonna demolish it now. Um, the changes in the cost, why it wasn't smart then, but now it's a smart idea to keep it. So, that's gonna require, you know, some forethought and answering those questions ourselves.
Well, that's parking right there, too. We needed it for parking, for May's, for May's plan, couldn't keep the building there.
But we're also saying that we would have our students in it day in and day out.
Yeah.
And that we would, it's neat. And I think part of that, you did answer in that, when you're not having a full load of students in every room that needs to be air-conditioned, is different than having some cool spaces, and then having part of it be possibly un-air-conditioned, or, or the load would be different. It's, it's different use and different, I guess you would say, demands, load demands.
So, financially, it makes sense to move forward in November, but it sure would be nice if the financial implications wouldn't have such an impact on the way in getting, getting the project done. But we don't have answers to which one our community would probably support. We do know that short of two hundred votes, they were supporting option A.
Yes, and they understood it. I think that's one of the most difficult parts for me. When we had the Broadway plan, I believed in it wholeheartedly, and I loved having it there. But it went down, and it went down in a large way, and there were a lot of things going on at that time. Uh, this one, we worked so hard to make sure that people understood, and that our close questions are, were... We just tried to answer as many questions as we could. Uh, and it went, it was not successful, but it was by two hundred votes. So, there is a great deal of our community that does understand it.
Sure.
And this one, we could, once again, we have different things that are addressed on C, that we could clarify and could bring back, uh, and try to do the diligence that we did. We were so diligent about all of our meeting sensations, that we could do that for option C, moving forward. In this one, we would have to explain, even with the increase of cost, what the difference is in millage and how that would continue to be shouldered by our community.
Um, I'll add, I mean, one of the things that I can do, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing option A and option C. Sam expressed his, his, this interest in option B because he just didn't have enough information. I can have, um, our attorney write up two drafts of the ballot language, or the bond, and, I'm sorry, the resolution that we need to be passed. We can write one up for option A, we can write one up for option C. We can still go forward and see if we can answer some of those questions, and maybe just, and have another discussion on, I think August sixth is when our next meeting is set up. Um, just have another discussion, figure out where we wanna go. If not sooner than that, figure out where we wanna go. And we can definitely do two drafts and see where we go from there.
Definitely between now and August sixth, we could have a meeting scheduled with TSEP and community services, just to see about their level of interests and what their needs are. But, once again, I, we just have to be prepared. They may say, we, we personally have a thought, but we don't know what our board's thinking about it. Now, some groups may choose, they may, we may have the convenience of that they have their meeting coming up, and so that they might have a chance to discuss, but that's a, an unknown.
So, and here's, here's another idea, I guess. You know, we, we want some community feedback, right? We're trying to get some community feedback on this. It's important to get these two groups involved, but, you know, we spent a lot of time on these community engagement sessions on the other building. At that time, we collected a lot of names and email addresses. Is there a way to reach out to all those people, either with, um, uh, another community engagement session? And try and bring them together for, uh, for an evening discussion, present some options? Or, or a survey, or some type of, that we could provide them with? I mean, it's hard to do that without giving them a bunch of information, but, I mean, maybe we can get some information from them, something like that, to use that. I mean, we, we spent the time to gather that, their, their names and email addresses and phone numbers and... You know, is there a way to try and use some of that to try and give us some feedback? I mean, it's not, it's not ideal, but we had some people that definitely had an interest, and, and maybe we can reach out to them and get, and get some feedback, um, about...
It's also radical, but could we use tip line? Somebody wants to call and say, this is why I like this plan, or this is why I don't think you should do this plan? It's, it probably has a license and some limitations, but could we use it? It's a radical idea, but easy to publish that.
Well, they do, um, like, we do a lot of Google surveys. You could do a really short one, why did you vote yes, why did you vote no? And just a little blurb where they can, I voted yes because I think it's time for new schools, or I voted no because, um, I was unsure about the plan, or whatever. And I know it's not scientific, and I know it's not, you know, something fancy. But we have to find out what our community wants in some way. We have to reach out to them. And, you know, we could just kind of blast it, that if they go to the Tip City website, they can just, you know, put in an email address and...
We might need to do a combination. Maybe we, we do some sort of a, uh, whether it's a Google survey or something of that nature. We've got some tools as well, uh, and, and put that out, and then have just literally four, like, four questions. Keep it short, and the other piece, maybe we do offer a community engagement. We have this attached to, uh, the invitation, so that they see the slides that we're looking at that will be discussed. So, you know, I think clarification of what's on slides means a great deal, so people can understand or have an opportunity to ask questions. And, uh, at least it would have additional information for you to make your final decision before we move forward. Uh, it would be some feedback, but, you know, as we know, the difficulty is summer. And so, uh, who, who's available, and like so, so many, are they just trying to squeeze a few days in before we get into August, you know, because the days are going by so quickly? And families have been busy all summer, and now they're trying to have a, a little bit of time away. But for those that are in town, or if it's via email with a Google survey, maybe we'll get one reply or another.
And I'm wondering, you know, I mean, again, sort of radical, but could we use community services to help us do that community engagement or that survey? Meaning, they've got, you know, they, they put out their, their programs of, of what they're gonna have available. That mail list that they have, is there a way we can use that or have them help us get something out to the community board, a community engagement session, or a survey? Um, but, I mean, we don't, we may not have those people in, in our system.
So, that, that is a question really for community services and their practices, their protocol, because they may have reasons, because I'm sure they have other groups that's asking for that as well. So, I don't know. Andy, would you have an idea about, even for legal aspects of that?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't really talk with that.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I guess what I'm asking, if we provided them with something, could, could they, could they use their mail list to, to get it out? I'm, I'm not asking them to provide us with their mail list. I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask that. I would ask if, if there was a way that they would be able to provide information out to, to their customers, if you will, to the community, um, to help us, um, get the word out.
When, when does the next, um, city of Tip City elect to fill that? Because you know how they always have their little...
Fly minute, I was thinking about that too some...
Please head over to Tip City Schools and fill out the short, but I don't know when the next building's up.
I got mine today, just...
All right, so we just missed it, didn't we? Yeah.
You can't go to the board of the lecture and get everybody's... They have to provide because it's public knowledge.
Oh, that's right, well, send out a postcard that way, just please go to the website and give us your feedback. It would be so kind.
You can have that mailed tomorrow.
Yeah, what it can do is a one call to our school district, it's the thing we need, the whole community's, let's...
Right.
I'm just trying to find a way to reach out to as many people as we can reach out.
I agree.
Really, we need to hear from people that voted no.
Yes, and we just don't know where those...
Right.
Can I interject? So...
Turn the camera on yourself.
You... You're trying to find out why people voted no. You didn't have fifteen thousand people vote in this election. So, you only need to harvest from the election polls those who voted. So, it minimizes your outreach. However, it doesn't necessarily give you a cross-section, because your voter turnout for this one was much lower than it will be in November. So, when you talk about...
Yeah, something...
Dave, we have that, because we were just passing it.
It was around that.
Because I think thirty-seven percent is pretty high.
So, you have to look at your two hundred votes, but you should look at it as a percentage. So, in November, you're going to have how many more voters at your polls? And so, you have to consider your differential.
And I think our voter turnout for May election was, like, unheard of statistically.
We had three thousand seventy people vote in the May election. I don't know how many total voters there are.
I think that was like thirty-seven percent of registered voters, which is huge.
So, the other thing, when we initiated a survey in past years through our own abilities, it was sabotaged, so that there was one person who kept sending in results. Do you remember that? And so, it really slanted our results, and we had to cut it off.
Yeah, that's why I would prefer to send something out to them to send back to us, rather than have a website them go.
We don't have the time.
But, I mean, that's...
We should have done that in May.
Right.
May would have been the time.
So, I guess I keep going back to what we told the voters, we said we will come back, and we, we implied it would be the same plan, that would cost more. So, not only are we going to have to invest in the explanation as to why we're not taking state money and why we want this local control. So, then you're gonna have to have this whole educational campaign about what would be the features of option C, and why did you change? And there's not a lot of time to do that. So, so we're, we're sort of shifting in midstream when we told the voters we were gonna ask for the same thing, that would cost more money.
But they didn't tell us they would vote yes the second time, though. Just because we told them we're gonna come back doesn't mean...
Well, I, I guess we should think about what we do know. There, there was a, a pretty strong pulse that the need is well-established. Okay, and that there's, there's a sense of urgency to get this done. And so, I think we need to pay attention to that, and while, you know, financially, I think it's smart to go in November, the whole unknown of, okay, well, now here's this new option C, maybe we should have followed that, and maybe people would prefer that. And I guess, you know, while I have a lot of compassion for, you know, community services and for the costumes and for TSEP, and I want those answers answered, we can't answer those questions for them. They have to answer and say what they're going to do. And we need to invest in schools, you know, in, in education, because that's what we're supposed to be doing. And I think Plan A addresses that. I guess I'd like Plan A, you can all tell, I mean... But it's not that I don't think Plan C's not good either. I like how it answers those questions, but does it answer those questions based on what TSEP and, uh, community services might do? Or doesn't, you know, it doesn't really address educational issues like Plan A does. Although I do also like that Plan C gets into traffic out of... But I really love the idea of putting the, um, the merge lane, and, I mean, those things are options that we should probably be pursuing regardless.
All right, a little tidation and...
Right.
...balkings, isn't it?
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, I guess we'll leave, to go ahead and get...
And what are the takeaways?
Well, get the millage certified on both of those, right?
Well, uh, we'll have to...
Yeah, we could do both. We'll get the mill certified. I mean, honestly, it's what's on this piece of paper right here. Sure, I, I know, but it's got the official...
It's got the official, right, yeah.
Well, what I heard Dr. Punt say is that her team is, can get behind C, can you get behind A?
Yes, we can. We can and we will. Whatever the board decides, we know that we need facilities for, for our students. And we know that it's not an easy decision. Uh, and we know that we believe, we have believed in both of those plans. Each for their own reasons.
Okay, no further discussion right now, we'll go ahead and move on. I'll let Dave get the...
I'll need to walk around again.
Yeah.
Kick this all out.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
Thank you for testing all that, or brushing it off on two thousand and sixteen.
And I, I know you have a long drive to, to being there.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, uh, item three is citizens' comments. Let's see if there's anyone here to present. Um, item four is president's comments. I will also defer, given the time of the evening and how much we have to get through. Um, and so, we'll move straight into item five, proof of minutes. I'll try to make these quick.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
To present it to all three of us.
Second. And seconded, any discussion? Let's do elements, Sam. Do you need me to announce that or...
Yeah, just, just, only thing to note is that the tip line is not TIPP line, it's not our line, it's just a normal tip line, TIPP line.
We don't own it, it's not named after us.
Should not be tipped, TIPP line. That has been corrected. It's not mine, although, anyway, that's it.
We had a new service there.
Right. Okay, if there's no further corrections, we're ready for the vote. Heatherly?
Yes.
Fano?
Yes.
Doll?
Yes.
Ventures? Yes, and motion's approved. Okay, moving on now to the treasurer's report. I'll turn that over. Well, let's start with I D A, the monthly financial report.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And seconded to accept, uh, to approve the financial report, any discussion?
Uh, I'll just note that this is the end of the year financial report, this is the one that we all are interested in seeing.
Sure.
Uh, and in the end, you can see that the board, I mean, that the district, we did, uh, receive some additional revenues that weren't originally budgeted for. Uh, there is a document that goes through those interests, uh, those, those items, uh, one being interest revenue was up. Foundation revenue did go up because we did have higher number of students coming in into the district throughout the year. And, um, we did have some. Pardon?
And the Medicaid money?
There was some Medicaid money that came because.
Reimbursements.
Yeah, they did, uh, they gave us two years' worth of reimbursements this year, rather than just the normal one, because they are, they were three years behind. So they caught up with one. And then, uh, we also, on the expenditure side, we spent less than what was budgeted. Um, I don't know if you guys saw, I'm really, really excited about this, but the personnel services and payroll and benefits. Uh, we were within point zero eight percent of what was budgeted. Um, we were only off sixteen thousand dollars in a budget that's almost fifteen million, so. Oh.
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved. Uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty temporary appropriation amendments. Would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Joel and Sam, any discussion?
I just added in, uh, um, general fund, we, uh, if, if you're not aware, we did have some track equipment that was damaged in the. The windstorm, not the tornado storm, but there was a windstorm that occurred a little earlier than that, we had about twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of equipment that was damaged. It is covered by insurance, so, uh, we're, we've received the insurance check into the general fund, we'll purchase the track equipment out of the general fund. So I budgeted that, and it's not something that we budgeted for this year.
Does that include the repair of the baseball nets?
I have to, I was gonna ask the same question, a little more damage than just track. Yeah, um, Gary kept saying track field, I, there is more coming insurance-wise, so that's just for that portion right there.
Okay.
Um, and then the other, uh, part of the budget increase, uh, we did put in a draft athletic budget. Uh, Mr. Creamer is still working on that with me, we, we, because he had a situation with his family, we haven't been able to meet yet. But we've got a draft budget in there, um, so that's what we've got there. Any other questions or concerns?
Okay, ready for, ready for a vote?
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved. Moving on, item C, purchase order certification, then now, again, would entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Corinne, Corinne and Sam, any discussion?
Just two items on the list this time. I mean, this completes the, uh, the expense here for the military wall blocks, is the honor wall that we.
Correct.
We did at the high school, I think Steve or his period.
You'll see before the, uh, start of the school year, a board recognizing the National Veterans Scholars. Throughout the, the school's history.
Ready? Go ahead.
Okay, you ready for a vote?
Uh, Dahl?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved. And now item D, estate budget update.
Nothing to vote on here, it's just me talking. If you haven't heard, it's the state, uh, there is a state budget now for the next two years. The increase for schools was based upon us getting what we received in fiscal year nineteen. Uh, they didn't increase the amount that we received per student, in the past, we've been seeing ten dollar increases each year. Used to be hundred dollar increases, and then it's ten, and now we're at the same dollar amount, sixty twenty. Less the state share index that they take away from us because of our, the wealth in our district, so I, um. The biggest infusion of state funding for this budget is wellness funding, that's been provided to all school districts across the, the state of Ohio. Depending on the poverty level that's in your district, the, the, the more impoverished your district is, the more money you receive per student for wellness. Our district will receive a hundred and ten thousand dollars of wellness funding in fiscal year two thousand twenty. If we have, we currently, our ADM, that's our average daily membership, the state is using is two thousand five hundred and thirteen students, so that's about. We're at forty-three dollars and eighty cents roughly per student. Uh, the lowest they were giving out was twenty dollars and the highest was two hundred and fifty, so we're on the low end. In two thousand twenty-one, that range has changed from thirty dollars to three hundred and sixty. We will receive a hundred and fifty-five thousand in two thousand twenty-one, and that's roughly about sixty-one dollars, assuming. The additional item that was added that we haven't seen before, uh, the budget included funding for fast-growing districts. That saw enrollment increase between sixteen and nineteen, and I've got it down, our ADM increased, uh, in two thousand sixteen, it was twenty-four hundred and twenty-four students. It went down to twenty-three eighty-nine. But then we went back up to twenty-four forty-nine, and then we ended at twenty-five thirteen. So from sixteen to nineteen, we've gone from twenty-four twenty-four to twenty-five thirteen, so eighty-nine students. In those, in those three years, well, four years. So we're gonna receive, they estimated to give us a little bit more money, we're gonna get twenty-seven thousand next year and forty thousand in the year after, because we're a fast-growing district. State budget in a nutshell.
So really, to sum that up, it's less than one percent increase to our budget.
Yeah, pretty much.
Is there any new mandates to this new budget?
Um, not, not that affect us negatively, um, unless you've heard something I didn't read. Overall, the state budget here, they're encouraging us to spend money on the wellness of our students. That's what they really want us to, to be doing here. There, I, we'll kind of go back a little bit, there was the, uh, the other budget, the Cut Patterson budget that was presented to the, to the legislatures that they didn't go with this year. That one is felt to believe, it's believed to be more fair to all districts. Again, their purpose for that budget was to remove more schools from the cap and from the guarantee, and try to have us actually be funded on what's happening in our district. So, uh, I do believe that the Cut Patterson, uh, fair funding for all will be back. We will see that, whether or not it'll pass, who knows?
They've been proposing budgets, that group, for years, I mean. I'm sure it will be back again with some variation, but.
Okay, we will now move on then to item seven, old business, uh, we do have an item here, uh, on class rank, I'll, uh, Red, did you wanna?
Yeah, I just was gonna highlight, that's, uh, policy fifty-four thirty, uh, and, uh, Mrs. Dahl, I did, uh, check with Mr. Stevenson. Uh, it did go through first read, um, uh, in the minutes, it's recorded as that.
Which, which one was, what meeting date was that?
Uh, May twenty-fourth, I'm sorry, June twenty-fourth, it was one of the attached documents in our first read section.
So, but it is pulled for, that particular one is pulled for the second read, we're not doing the second read on that scene, because. Uh, as I was trying to convey, and I, I don't know how clearly I did that in the Friday board update, that, uh, I think that it need, I feel that it needs to be under advisement at this time. Because I know that there's more that we need to look at regarding whether that would remain weighted or unweighted grades, and that is part of that particular document. Uh, and so I thought that as we are, are getting new staffing on at the high school, both the principal, assistant principal, and then with our, our new assistant superintendent, I thought that. We'll give just a, a little bit of time to get everybody in place, we will hit that early on, so that we have that and know the direction that we're going for the school year. But, uh, we just need a few more weeks.
All right, any other discussion on the old business?
So I guess what I'm hearing you say is class rank will not, the new policy will not be approved tonight.
That's exactly right.
And that we may get a, a revision to the class rank policy, uh, in the near future, which would require two readings and probably won't be passed. Before, until we get those two readings.
That's right.
So how are we gonna communicate that to parents of freshmen that are, are picking classes now? How's that gonna affect?
Essentially, they have already registered for the classes, and they can pull them in.
Correct.
Yes, so I think the, the important thing is to convey that the classes that they've chosen, how those will be weighted. And then if they are wanting or needing adjustments, then that's something that we will have to be prepared to work with and through. Uh, based on the information, where, where this lands, but, uh, yes, and that's why I think that, uh, of when I say a couple of weeks, I, I truly mean that. Because we need to have that ready for when we're having the open house nights or, or a, a revision of, um. What, what is it, a welcome back night, that we need, if there's people have questions about that, we need to know the direction that we're going for the school year.
Okay, I'm moving on now to new business, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Kump.
All right, uh, our item A, recommend approval to accept the following re- resignations as per the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Sam and Corinne, any discussion? Hearing none, or ready for a vote?
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item B, recommend approval to accept the following, sorry, I'm on B, but it's not pulled up to B yet, there we go. Uh, item B, uh, recommend approval to employ Chris Zink as a high school principal on a two-year contract for the two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty, and two thousand, twenty, 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 twenty-one. School year, plus five transition days pending proper certifications and paperwork.
I'll make a motion.
Second, moved and seconded, Joel and Sam, any discussion? Hearing none, ready for a vote?
Enter.
Oh, no, Joel.
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Zane, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Now you can go.
That motion's approved.
All right, item C, recommend approval of a three point five percent increase in salary for Mr. Dave Stevens, treasurer's school, for the two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty school year.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Sam and Joel, any discussion? Hearing none?
Spano?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
No.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item D, recommend approval to employ the following classified staff for the two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty school year, pending proper certification and paperwork. That's Sylvia Eldridge, Tracy Light, and Carrie Robbins.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Sam and Corinne, any discussion? Hearing none?
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item E, recommend approval of the following contract correction due to clerical error, Kristen March, Marsh, from a bachelor's step five to a bachelor's one fifty step four. And Melissa Lang from a continuing contract to a second year of a two-year contract.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Moved and seconded, Joel and Sam, any discussion? Hearing none, or ready for a vote?
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item F, recommend approval to employ the following substitute position for the two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty school year, pending proper certification and paperwork.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Sammy, Corinne, any discussion here? Hearing none, or ready for a vote?
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item G, recommend approval to employ the following supplemental positions for the two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty school year, pending proper certification and paperwork. That's Joe Derg, assistant high school football coach, Brian Mayfield, program assistant high school football, uh, and that's approval to pay up to two thousand dollars for football, Glenn Racing.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Moved and seconded, Joel and Sam, any discussion? Hearing none, or ready for a vote?
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item H, approval to, recommend approval to employ the following for athletic service in the two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty school year, as per the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Sam and Corinne, any discussion?
These are just new positions that we created at the high school, or?
This is to support, this is to swing, isn't it?
Or we just, we decided now that they need to be compensated, or what, what, I mean, these weren't in the original.
Yeah, I read the wrong thing.
I was gonna say.
Okay, let me start again, this, I have the wrong one, my computer's a little slow and it lags, so I apologize. Let me start again, this is item H, all right, let's go to this, item H, recommend approval of the Tip City exempted village schools. And the TCA memorandum of understanding dated July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, for the two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty supplemental salary schedule. And to add two supplemental contract positions for Link Crew and one supplemental contract position for Spidey. Okay, all right.
So these are these advisors?
Okay, so this, so.
Phil, Sam?
So do we still?
Phil, Corinne.
Yes, I'm, no, that was a motion I thought we were on, so.
Okay, thank you, all right, so, um, yes, yes, it's a memorandum of understanding, and it's because we are adding two stipends for services that are being provided, that are programs that are not in their first year. Something that we see having and sustaining, and then I'm gonna let Mr. Fairhoff talk just a little bit more about that.
So if you remember, Link Crew was a freshman transition program that we implemented last year, so throughout the year, we gathered data on the number of hours that the advisors were putting in outside the contracted day. And when we looked at that at the end of the year, we had two advisors who put in approximately thirty hours outside the contracted day. And then three advisors who put in around twenty hours. And so, working with Mr. Stevens and Dr. Kump and, and Mrs. Yunker, um, we looked at two stipends that could be added. And one of those stipends would be split between the two lead advisors, and then the other stipend would be split between the three co-advisors that are working with the program. Um, Spidey was a organization that, or a club that the board approved investing in last fall. Um, throughout the school year, there was trainings that went on with, with a group of students, uh, on the weekends, there were five weekend trainings that were, were held. And then those students went to the middle school and led sessions with sixth grade students on promoting cultural understanding and understanding of diversity and, and just respecting of others and, and anti-bullying type programming. Those two advisors put in approximately twenty to twenty-four hours outside of the contracted workday, and so again.
What's the, like, twenty to twenty-four hours extra per week, per school year?
Through the, throughout the school year.
Okay.
And so when you look at some of our high school clubs and things like that, they may meet, uh, once or twice a month for an hour, um, at a time, so they're on. Level playing field, if not a little bit greater emphasis or con- concentration outside of the, the contracted day.
Yeah, I just wanted to say the parameters.
Absolutely.
Okay. No further discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Spano? Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heavenly?
Yes.
Venters?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Now we're on I, as soon as I, so, it's just slow. All right, recommend approval to employ the following for athletic service for the two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty school year as per the agenda. This would be the athletic game workers.
I'll make motion.
I'll second.
Oh, that's right, moved in second, Sam and Corinne, any discussion?
So this is just our initial list, or have we been added to this list on a regular basis?
Uh, we actually, um, throughout the year, we add.
Right, throughout the year.
This is our initial list for this year.
Okay.
All right, so no further discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yep.
Heavenly?
Yes.
Venters?
Yep.
Oh, no, I didn't, that motion's approved.
Okay, all right. Item J, recommend approval of the following out-of-state and overnight trip, that's from high school cross country to Louisville, Kentucky, September twenty-eighth to the twenty-first, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved in second, it's Joelle and Corinne, any discussion?
I don't think it's possible we take down our cross-country. Will we take a bus down, or what, how will we?
Typically, they would take school vans.
Right, I mean, this is a bigger group or not?
The, this would, my guess is that this would be more of just the varsity and the top runners within the varsity group in preparation for, you know, the district meet, the regional meet, and the state meet, to try and manage this.
So we think we'll get all, all in a van?
Probably with a van.
We do this every year.
Yes.
They've gone to, they've gone to Culver Academy in Indiana the past couple of years. So I think they've just looked at a different location based on regional competition and seen where the best runners are.
Well, the best runners are in Tipp, why do we need to look at that?
Exactly.
They're sizing up their competition a little bit.
Okay. There's no further discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Heavenly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Venters?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item K, recommend approval of resolution adopting a calamity day alternate makeup plan for the two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty school year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, it's Sam and Corinne, any discussion?
Yes, um, Dr. Kumpf, last year, we talked about changing it, you know, based on needs of our parents, community, did we change anything in this plan?
We did do a couple small changes, we actually put them side by side to really look at them. And it is personalized to Tipp. One is that we, uh, the plan has to be adopted prior to August first, so we're in good shape on that. But I think it's down here a little bit lower. We have a piece about the teachers will update and replace lessons as necessary throughout the school year based on instructional progress to students. So we try to keep it fresh, and the superintendent has the ability to request assignments to be updated if I would see that somebody is lacking on doing that. And. Number seven, that one is something that's been worked out within our district and also that the union is aware. It's about the students enrolling in courses posted, shall be granted a two-week period from the date of the posting to complete the lesson. And then if the student does not complete the lesson within the time frame, that they will receive an completed failing mark. The all complete work will be graded, that's something that we add, that's not required, that's, but if it's being assigned, it needs to be more, you know, that's something that time is put in and that will be graded and entered.
Um, I just received a lot of feedback from, um, parents in our community about frustrations over Blizzard bag assignments, the amount of assignments, just the stress, you know, you already have kids home one day and then trying to make up these assignments. Is, is, am I reading this correct, that they start doing Blizzard bags after the third day of school?
No, after the fifth, it would have five, five regular calamity days or weather days, or, or once again, it could be, you know.
Straight line winds.
Yeah, yeah, straight line winds, those are right. And then after that, we would enact those, and then we do, we have up to three that we could do, which does alleviate difficulty if you do have a harsh winter.
Okay, because the whole, I mean, the whole purpose behind this is that we don't have to make up days at the end of the school year.
And that they are completing some instruction and the teachers are making themselves available throughout the day, looking at things and posting things. And then that they are committing that they will follow up with grading and posting, and then it's just not busy work that doesn't have any input into as far as their progress, you know, integrated. Number eight, that one is rather personalized for us as well about, uh, that we utilize the option of the two weeks, but also that if they don't complete it in that period, uh, oh, we talk about if, whether the equipment is available and accessible at the time. So we do provide provisions in case someone, if their internet's down, or if, and that's where we have found that, that's why we say calamities, it is an E-day and it's also Blizzard bag. Because with families that have three children and they have one computer, then that becomes a stress point. So we found that with some of our younger grades, it is helpful to actually have it truly to be the completed work that would be, I'll call it, uh, photocopy pages that they are using or activities that are prescribed to things to be doing. And that that alleviates that not everyone has to be on the computer. Yeah, and you know, sometimes it's like, you know, that they need to be reading a book for twenty minutes, and that that's just signed off. So that gives them some reading time, which is not computer time.
So like, for a second grader, how many assignments do they have to do per E-day?
Well, uh, I, I know I've got a first grade teacher in here, uh, if, uh, do you mind sharing that?
I believe in, in. You know, even in first grade, it was somewhere around thirty minutes worth of work for the day.
For your class?
For my class.
Okay.
Fifteen minutes of reading, um, they would do their spelling homework that they were always, they were gonna have anyway. And then a little bit of math and, you know, I did E-day, I didn't send home a Blizzard bag, I put it all online. And if I had a parent who needed coffees, that went home too, so, you know, thirty minutes, I don't know, Tina, if that was about right?
Yeah.
Is that about right, and then specials do not do?
They do, whatever special they were to have that day, there's something typically put on, just even just an activity, you know, for PE, it could be something active.
And I think it should be acknowledged, our, our teachers, they led some online activities, and so the students could log on and their teacher was doing an online activity, art activity.
Uh-huh, yes, Mrs. Wolf did, it was, it was creating. Yeah.
I guess I'm, I'm just, I was looking at some other, um, school districts, what they do with Blizzard bags, some of them don't even have them because now that we're moving, we moved to ours, we have, I think, thirty extra days in our elementary school year. So I'm not really, I mean, I don't know, I, I just, I received a lot of feedback from parents that it stresses them out. You know, they were all over the Facebook and whatever, and I, I'm not sure if we can't just push back our policy to day ten starting this. Um, if that wouldn't alleviate some of the stress for parents who are, many of them aren't even home with their kids, they might have three kids. They're trying to pull together resources or making sure that their kids are doing these assignments. I mean, I don't even know how many years we get close to ten days off, I can think of, you know, what was that year, like twenty eleven or whatever, where we had maybe two weeks off. Just because of, like I said, the feedback that I got from parents about this was a major stress in their lives. And if it's just thirty minutes of reading, if that's the assignment, I mean, that, that's probably already covered under a reading log anyways, that most of our students probably have to do for YO classes.
So I think the, probably the greatest area is when we get into middle school, I specifically the high school, because the high school in particular are seniors, that, that those days, I know that I do work with the EMIS coordinator closely as we get like through the five days about where are we and how close are we going to be with the days that they have. So it does make a difference so that they're able to have a few days that we traditionally had here that's off. But when they do that, that cuts into the number of hours and.
The senior option.
Yes, the senior option piece. So that, that's probably the greatest area, I agree, in the elementary, it's not as impactful. I think there is a, a piece about, once again, about keeping them engaged, and I understand, I think that we have toned it back or dialed it back. When the first time we did it, I think every, every teacher felt like they needed to do like a full, you know, whether it was a forty-two minute period, having that amount of work and it was too much in one day, because they, they wanted to make sure that it wasn't just fluff, that it was a bit overwhelming. And I think that it's much more realistic now, that's not to say that, that some parents are not, that they're feeling stressed, I, I can acknowledge that. I mean, I.
I mean, maybe, maybe a Blizzard policy that addresses that, you know, students in grades nine through twelve, their bags, their Blizzard bags start on the fifth day or the third day or whatever, and then elementary age and below doesn't start until the tenth day. Again, just based on all of the feedback that I received from parents.
So we are a little tricky about this at this time, you know, uh, because I, I do want us to have this in order. So, I mean, I am open to adjustments for a, a following year, or if there's a policy change mid-year, I mean, that would supersede.
I, I'll just say, one of the issues with E-days and Blizzard days is that after five days, maybe it's calamity day, on the sixth, on the sixth calamity day, classified staff, uh, we're expected, we're, we're asked to come into work.
Not asked, expected.
Expected to come into work, and that's, that's around the state. And so, I mean, if you start changing it around to, well, this group doesn't have to come in after, until after ten days, and this group has to come in after ten, after five days, I, I mean, you're gonna see a lot of, um, comments on why do they have to and, and, and why do we have to and they don't? So, I mean, that's just something else.
You mean posting, like, why does high school staff have to post, you know, Blizzard bag assignment?
In, in our contract, certified staff wouldn't be coming in anyway, because they work remotely no matter when it's closed.
Okay.
And it's may, you may, in, in the language, it's the word may, um, make up the days at the end of the school year, that word may is in there.
Yeah, but for those that are working two hundred and sixty days a year.
Your custodial, your lunch.
Yeah, there's, there's no way to make up days if you're working around all that.
Well, I don't think they're held to, I don't think the policy about student hours has anything to do with classified staff.
No, uh, but I'm just, I mean, I'm misunderstanding.
I guess the trade-off is we could not do Blizzard bags and just add on more days at the end of the school year, which adds a whole layer of complications too, for childcare and, you know, vacation plans and, you know, so either way, it's not ideal, there's, there's.
Well, Blizzard bags, so, the reason why we do a Blizzard bag is so that we wouldn't have to do that. But, and right now, elementary students are only required to attend nine hundred and ten hours a school year. So the way our school years are based of about a hundred and seventy-four student days, hundred and seventy-five depending, hundred and seventy-three some districts, that is already like an extra thirty days, hours-wise. We would have to miss a whole bunch of days to even begin to have to make up hours that we missed for the elementary age. You know, now, now high school's, um, one thousand and one hours, so that would kick in a lot sooner.
It's the seniors, but I don't really think that it is thirty.
Well, it's, I mean, I mean, it's like, okay, twenty, twenty extra days, so.
Something, something to keep in mind though with the seniors is that we did make changes to the senior option policy where those hours are going to count towards their total hours in session. So they're not going to lose that forty-nine minutes every day because of the changes that we made to, to senior option and when they're doing job shadowing and things like that to try and beat that up and to alleviate some of those problems.
So I, I guess in the end, with all of this being said, to me, the calamity day Blizzard bag is a safety net in case we really have tough situations, but last year, we did have to use it because we did use up all five, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying go away from a Blizzard bag policy, I'm just saying can we push it back? On what day does it start, on what day do we start, um, having students engage in a, in a Blizzard bag activity? But if, if you're saying that we need to pass it today, maybe amend it later, I get that. I just, like I said, there's so many extra days and there's no days used to be magical.
Yes.
It's like this rare unicorn of a day that, you know, it's like, you get to go outside and play, and now we're like, no, you will not go outside and play.
Yes, there, there used to be some real joys.
Right, right.
So, so this policy though doesn't say when you start using it, right? I mean, I don't see where it says, was five, after five calamity days or after five calamity days declared or used.
Well, I think.
You must use this policy, I mean, so, I mean, isn't that at our discretion when, 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 uh, when you actually say that you use the, 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 this?
Does it sound like in our contract, that's for agreement? Not student work, when we attend, which would be not on a calamity day, so. And in this document, as I have it too, we don't have like after day five.
Right, that's what I'm looking for, it's not different.
So it's to Dr. Kumpf's discretion on when to implement that, that's how I read it, am I correct on that?
So it, it, there, there is some space on that, but what I will say, that's been the protocol, that's been the protocol, so not, not that that can be, not be changed.
Do we have like an admin guideline for this, that we use it, that we're getting the five days from?
Yes.
I think the, the five days is built into our calendar, right? We call, we, we, we claim we've got an extra five days in our calendar. So, that we could use for calamity day, but technically according to hours, I mean, that was all based around days, how many days you had to go to school, right? Now we're based on hours, the, the whole formula has changed, right? So, so, um, you know, maybe it's time to update that too, I don't know, so that's, I think that's where you go.
That's where I'm cutting with it, yes.
That's, that's a too close, so the, the reason I'm reluctant to say, oh, let's just change it tonight is because I really do want to coordinate that with EMIS.
True.
Uh, just because that's something we do not wanna trip up on.
Right.
So if we could approve this, if we do need to amend it, or as we're looking at it, uh, and after I've had some conversations with EMIS about, there's priority that we could do that on the seventh day, and we bump it out, then, then I will make sure we report that and we can do that at a meeting as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Last couple things, maybe.
At least have two minutes.
That's right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for a vote.
Okay. Spano?
Yeah, thoughts off.
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heavenly? Okay, sorry.
Yes.
Venters?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item L, recommend approval of the attached two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty agreement for the city of Tipp City to provide police services to Tipp City schools throughout August fourteenth, twenty, twenty.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved in second, it's Corinne and Sam, any discussion?
Basically, all I saw updated in this was rates, you know, the policy was all the same as we had in the past, correct?
And sixty, forty, sixty percent us, forty percent them, which is a shared cost, which is felt very helpful.
All right, there's no further discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Dahl?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Heavenly?
Yes.
Venters?
Yes, that motion's approved, and thank you to the Tipp City Police Department.
Item M, recommend approval of the following social studies curriculum committee members for the two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty school year as per the agenda.
I'll make motion.
Second.
Moved in second, it's Sam and Corinne, any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for a vote.
I thought there was a little bit of.
Oh, it's all right. Uh, Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heavenly?
Yes.
Venters?
Yes, that motion's approved.
Item M, recommend approval of the revised policies and guidelines to rescind policy number three four hundred salary schedules and update policy number forty-four hundred. Four thousand four hundred salary schedules as discussed on the June twenty fourth, two thousand nineteen agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved in second is Joel and Sam, any discussion?
Do you wanna give the update on that? I think that's about.
We rescinded the certified salary schedule because it's in the negotiated agreements and then we changed the number of days that a classified member had to work in order to receive a step increase. I think we changed it from, to two, to a hundred and twenty days, tried to keep it in line with, uh, the retirement system and what they acknowledge as a year.
Okay, no further discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Heavily?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Doll?
Yes.
Venters?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item O, recommend approval to accept five thousand dollars in grant dollars from STEM education. And I would like to read those just to highlight that. For Tipp, Tippenee High School, a wireless sensor classroom technology, and that's for Mr. Brown. At Tippenee High School, an engineering principles hardware and software kits, and that's for Mrs. Malott. At Tippenee High School, uh, an algebra and geometry classroom and technology and resource materials, and that's Mrs. Malott. At Tippenee Middle School, a STEM technology sensors and coding. At Tippenee Middle School, that's for Mr. Bonifus. At Tippenee Middle School, a compound microscope, and that's for Mr. Earl. And we certainly appreciate the STEM education organization for supporting us.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Moved in second is Sam and Joel, any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for a vote.
Spano?
Yes.
Heavily?
Yes.
Doll?
Yes.
Venters?
Yes, that motion is approved. All right, that brings us to item nine. Upcoming meetings, uh, the next tri- agency meeting will take place on Monday, July twenty ninth, two thousand nineteen at the city of Tipp City, beginning at six P M. There'll be a special meeting at six P M on August fifth, two thousand nineteen. And an additional special meeting at eight A M on August seventh, two thousand nineteen. The next regular board meeting will take place at six P M on Monday, August twenty sixth, at the Board of Education. And with that, uh, the next item on the agenda is an executive session. Uh, this would be, so if we would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for purposes authorized under Board of Education policy zero one six six. And O R C one twenty-one point two two G one, consider the complaints against the public employee are official. And we entertain a motion to, uh, so adjourned.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Moved in second is Joel and Corinne, uh, ready for a vote.
Heavily?
Yes.
Doll?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Venters?
Yes, and so, uh, we'll go into executive session, I do not anticipate any action following this.